Good evening, I want to call the Columbia County Board of Commissioners meeting to order, September 1st. I'm going to ask Commissioner or Vice Chairman Richardson if he would open us with an invocation.
If you would, bow your hand, please. Oh Jesus, we come to you, we thank you for this day, or we thank you for this right to assemble and govern, or we just thank you for the wonderful community that we live in. All of our employees and fantastic staff, we have so many, and we just ask you for protection on them. Or we lift up our first responders, responders, and thank you for them, and Lord, we just ask for safety. Lord, I ask you to give us wisdom and guide us in direction to go through this meeting and honor you in all things we do. In the precious name we pray.
You stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic which stands, our nation, the God, Israel, the redeemed.
At the record show, we have four of five commissioners present. Could not be with us tonight. Commissioners, you have the minutes from the previous meeting of August 18th in your package. Your approval, I'll accept a motion to do so.
Motion to accept.
Second. All favor, raise your right hand. The presentation of the agenda, we have two items added, I-2A and I-2B, we'll get to those when we get there.
And one item for executive session, Mr. Chairman. Item C for executive session.
Correct. All right. Mask on if you're going to do that. That's a COVID joke. All right, well, we have some special recognitions, and Vice Chairman Richardson is going to give those. We have the Employee of the Month, Chris Mize with Stormwater Utility. Chris?
Helping the comp in mindful manners, excuse me, I'm sorry about that. And with so many fast changes, changes and projects and personnel going on in his area, Chris goes over and above, be helpful in all, and to help his group and train them, and to give this knowledge that he has, expertise, shows leadership to the whole team. I'm going to pass this to Mike and let him give you a few more kudos that are well deserved. With this, you get $100, name on the plaque, but we will take taxes out of that for you, so.
It's split day. No, Commissioner Richardson pretty much summarized it, but I want to thank Chris for what he does to help me, help the community. He'll deserve it.
There we go.
Didn't need that, did I?
Hall, just speak loudly.
Cleaning in, trying to hide. I don't think that's going to work.
We also have another award tonight for our team of the second quarter, the Roads and Bridges On Call Team. So if that team had come on down, that'd be. Mercy, who's on call now?
They are.
Yeah, just let them introduce themselves, just pass the mic. Right. Congratulations. Awesome. Thank you very much. I'll snuggle in for a picture. Thank you.
Chairman, I've spent many a nights on the roads with those groups, that guy, that group of guys right there. We've gone 48, 72 hours without sleep, that's a hard working crew right there, so well deserved.
I've told Tim that they make us look good, and they've got a pretty tough job to do to make us look good, but they do do that, so.
Under Presentations, is Mr. Philip Price here? Yes, to speak, press on from that. Commissioners, you have the consent agenda in front of you, the items on that agenda have been through committee and received the necessary votes to be placed on this agenda. If they still meet with your approval, I'll accept one vote to approve them all.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion, on paper, raise your right hand. Go straight to the debate agenda, and I believe we have one person who wants to speak, Ashley Dane. Are you Ashley? Sure, come on. Just state your name and address for the record, please, sir, and take five minutes.
Sure, Victor Apat, 537 San Andrews Boulevard, Charleston, South Carolina. What I'd like to do tonight is first paint a picture of what we're doing on the property. And Vice Chair Richardson, I would thank you for that prayer because we wholeheartedly agree that this is a wonderful community, which is why we made the decision to locate our community within your community. Our community is about furthering your community and the care of seniors. And the next few phases that we're involved with are simply part of that creation of a continuum of care. Trying to provide an opportunity for seniors in this community to have an opportunity to move from their current residence next phase of their life, and if you notice, the name of our community is Thrive at Augusta. And it's not anything negative about moving into the next phase of your life because we believe that you're going to thrive in the next phase of your life. That's what our community is about. We want those seniors to truly enjoy the rest of their lives, and we believe we provide an opportunity in our communities for that to occur. Now, with that said, I think you'll find that our community, because we are creating a continuum of care, is not a multifamily project. It's certainly similar, but we're providing opportunities for seniors to age in place and continue their care as their health eventually declines. That doesn't happen in just a multifamily community, it happens at Thrive at Augusta. Because of that, we believe there are some items, again, that just differentiate us because of that continuum of care. So because of the scenario, what we've requested in our variance is really two different things. One is an increase in density, we'll go into that in a second, the other is a kind of a height variance. Our property, I'll go into the height variance first, and I don't know, I was told the power point would be available, but either way, we have a very sloping site. So all we're really asking for is for a, and the height piece of the puzzle, is to recognize that we have the main plateau where we're going to build a three-story building. And as it slopes off to one side, we want a four-story building on that one side. Now, what's the main reason for that? The very simple reason is that for seniors, and that's that community we talked about a few minutes ago, we want the majority of our apartments to be walk-up apartments. So this gives us a whole other first floor at the lower level for our seniors to walk up. It really is trying to provide that sense of community and care and recognize the demographic that we're appealing to. The second aspect, again, from our standpoint, and remember that we created this PUD over four years ago. So, you know, we obviously couldn't go totally into design at that point in time to know exactly what the market would be at that point. And so the other piece we're asking for is a gable roof. Very simple, and all that does is add to the height piece, the puzzle that you're seeing in this picture. But we don't want to have a flat roof if we can avoid it because we think the gable roof provides a more residential appeal. And it is in continuation of the current design that's in our community now. So that consistency, that residential feel, that home feel, is what we're trying to accomplish. So this is the piece of the puzzle that relates to the height request. So it's not a big deal, you really can't see much of this from the road. We're on a 40-acre tract of land, it's a big piece of property. We're far enough off the road, just don't see a lot of issues with this. And we're not going to be impacting neighbors on this side because this three-four split is away from any neighbor. No one is near it. The second aspect, again, also relates to that first-floor unit scenario. With the addition going from 180 units to 208, we are able to accomplish that lower level which allows for our seniors to have a majority of units that are walk-up on the first floor. Again, we believe that is appealing to our demographic, and again, that's that sense of community that Vice Chair Richardson mentioned earlier in his prayer. We're just trying to make sure that those seniors can thrive in our community. We believe it's a very small additional change to the PUD, and we would simply request approval on both of those items. Now, I would simply then ask, I know there's, I'm just being realistic here, I know there's been some pushback in this community about density increase, so we understand that. If, in fact, you are so inclined not to approve the density, which we hope is not the case, I would ask that you do approve the height component separately, and don't let one get clouded by the other. I'm glad to answer any questions that's necessary.
You are a builder, sir?
I'm sorry?
You are a builder by trade?
I was a builder by trade.
Yeah.
Long since retired.
And you have other senior living facilities, you've built other?
Yes, I do.
Facilities. Have you ever built in a wet area like this?
Oh, yes, many times.
So you're familiar with FEMA Corps of Engineers-type situations? Are you in good standing with all of these federal agencies right now?
Yes.
The FEMA website yesterday indicated that you might have have an issue with something from last year? Have you heard of all of that?
No, we're in good standing with FEMA, we don't have an issue from last year, the way you're perhaps saying, Connie, as much as FEMA has gone back and forth on three separate occasions and changed the formulas with which they have a clomer to a conditional letter of map revision to a final letter of map revision. And we've submitted on several occasions, we've gotten to approval, and they've literally come back to us on two separate occasions and asked us to revise it based on a new set of rules. So we're just in the process with the engineering firm, Swifton Associates, for getting that resubmitted now for the fourth time.
It wasn't because you missed any deadlines?
Missed no deadlines, none that I'm aware of.
Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer the applicant the opportunity to withdraw before we vote.
Can I ask why?
Well, do you understand the six-month rule?
And we've submitted everything within the six-month rule.
Well, I mean, if we say no today, you can't come back within months.
Okay. I guess I'll look back, any questions?
You, Ashley? Why don't you come on up and state your name? I apologize, would you state your name and rest of the record?
Ashley Dane. Sorry, and I hate speaking.
That's all right.
3595 Wild Plum Road. The Swifton Associates, by Blue Harbor, did encounters. Issues which I will not go into depth with that on a deadline at that point in time, at such point. The maps were revised. And they asked us to read all of the calculations. Go back, everything, all the questions. Came back later, and then, oh wait, we're sorry, we have to go back. Original maps because that's how you were. Go back, and we think there's some unfairness there because you just asked us to calculate it all, we paid them everything. Had difficulty getting it. That last little word. But ask us to read it. But my question was, all tonight, does that mean?
Okay, withdraw the application. But I would also mention, but I would also mention that this particular project does not affect any of the, we're all within the 500 years, we'll certainly withdraw.
See that letter from FEMA, we just need to get it all cleared up.
Okay, not a problem.
And if any of you all have have a more direct conversation with FEMA? Add.
Adenosine.
Effort trying to close, I think that happily.
Never had any issues with federal government ourselves.
Then you are the right person to speak on our behalf.
So actually, I think it would be, we'd have to have a motion to table it till the next meeting.
I was giving him the opportunity to withdraw.
Yeah, that's a.
Yeah, actually, you could vote to table it, they've made a request to withdraw, so you could take action on that to just allow them to withdraw. If they withdraw, they'll go through the entire process again, and that may give them a chance to change a few things and address a few things. If you just table it, then we'll be hearing the same exact matter again at the next meeting. So allowing them to withdraw allows them to start the process over, essentially.
Of the one issue?
Yes, or any issue, any other issue they may have outstanding, correct. So either way, the board wanted to go.
Yes, we just withdraw.
I was like a plan, we don't have to vote on that, right?
Yes, you do, you would have to vote.
Let them withdraw.
I'd make a motion to let the applicant withdraw.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
Very much.
On to Mr. Johnson, we have the two added items on the agenda.
Well, we have to take action.
We have one other item.
Sorry, on the second one, excuse me, that's right, on the second one, I apologize.
So, Chairman, I spoke with the applicant regarding item I-1A2, and he requested that it be tabled until the next meeting. Well, I'd like to make a motion.
Can I ask you to extend that to a couple of meetings out of month, so we'll have plenty of time to?
For a date to be named later. Be determined at a later date.
Motion to postpone to a certain date.
It does have to be a certain date?
Well, I mean, yes.
Yeah, I think you would have to have a, you'd have to have a date.
I'll give you a date.
First date in October?
Right. That works for me.
First meeting in October is when?
6th.
October the 6th, so the motion would be to table until October the 6th.
Can I ask, is it why?
I just want to make sure everybody has ample time to discuss this. There's a, I understand that the applicant has been in that location for 50-plus years, and I admire him for his stamina to be there that long. That is a compliment for somebody to run a business and be there that long. Also, we as a community, I think, are taking a real hard look at Martinez.
Not a doubt.
And what a community we want to see changes or growth or improvements.
Revitalization?
Revitalization, however we want to term it, whatever that vision is, I want to make sure that everybody has a chance to get on the same page on what we think we are trying to look at in Martinez.
And I agree with all that, my only hesitation is that I spoke to the applicant earlier, and he was told two weeks. So I don't want to necessarily make an adjustment, we could always table it again into it.
Can, but I would, technically, I mean, we table all the time, but it's a postponement to that date, next meeting.
So it is not a motion to table, it is a motion to postpone the vote?
Yes, postpone.
The item.
The item until the next meeting.
Okay. So I mean, is that, we can always do it again.
It satisfies me, I just want to, I want to give him ample chance to make a something that staff can feel comfortable with, and they can come back to us and say, hey, this is a vision that I think the whole community can get behind and move forward, and we can also, so.
I fully agree, I want it to be a win-win for everybody as well. Again, my only hesitancy is with the applicant not here, because there was an understanding he didn't need to be. I would hate to change the terms of that understanding.
I'm 100% good with it.
That's all I'm saying, so let's, so then, that being the case, I'll make a motion to postpone this item until the next meeting.
Yes, sir, I'll second that.
November 15th.
Second that.
Any other discussion or debate? All in favor, raise your right hand, it is postponed. Now, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item that we've added to the, first item we have added to the agenda tonight is an item to declare some property surplus. This is old shelving equipment and library equipment that is located in the Old Eech Creek Library. As you know, the Grove Town Library is up and running now, it got all brand-new equipment. We did have several pieces of equipment that are still usable that did not get moved. Rather than putting this on gob deals, we reached out to other cities and counties to see if anybody needed it. We had a lot of interest, and we are coming to you tonight asking for you to approve the intergovernmental agreement with Piedmont Regional Library to allow them to have this surplus shelving and library equipment. They have, they have made arrangements to disassemble it and to have it moved, so it's just a matter of us declaring it surplus and you allowing them to have it.
Cash and carry.
Well, there's really no cash, it's just carry. Right. It's either that or we have to dispose of it some other way. We just, it's kind of a unique situation, it was going to be hard to dispose of this, and there's a lot of it. It's really kind of unique to a single user.
It's free to a good home, is what it is.
I like it.
Yes, it is. The staff recommend the approval of that intergovernmental agreement with the Piedmont Regional Library system.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All favor, raise your right hand. At the show.
All right. The next item that we've added to the agenda tonight is a position and a job description for our Assistant Venue Manager at the Columbia County Performing Arts Center. As you know, in the budget this year, we did approve a certain amount of money for the beginning operations of our Performing Arts Center. In that, we had a manager's, a venue manager's position approved. We have successfully made an offer to a venue manager, but during that process, we found a second person that we all think would be of great benefit to Columbia County at this time, we've spoken with our consultant about that. They think it's also a great idea. So we have the budget already in place, but we don't have a position to put this person in. So this is the creation of a position. The position would be the Assistant Venue Manager at the Performing Arts Center. It is a manager six exempt grade 36 with an annual salary of $72,654.40, a Class C car allowance, and a smartphone allowance. And staff has recommended approval on that position and job description.
And you feel there's definitely a need for both?
Yes, sir, so basically what we're going to have is, we've been able to hire somebody that's really going to do a lot of the front-of-the-house work. Everybody that we spoke to said that we were going to have to have kind of a front-of-the-house person and a back-of-the-house production person in the very beginning. And our consultants agree with that, we were trying, we're still trying to get by with minimal staff, but we think that the technical expertise these two bring, we're going to be able to open day one with a huge show with our staff already in place. If we can get a huge show, COVID is kind of holding us back, but we'll be ready when the artists are ready. But yes, sir, I think we need this position, and I think going forward, we might need one or two more, but I'm thinking a staff of a max of four over there will be what we will have for some time until they get up and running. But right now, we're only looking at these two, these are the two that need to open the building.
Questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the position and job description for the Assistant Venue Manager at the Columbia County Performing Arts Center, manager six exempt, grade 36 with an annual salary of $72,654.40, a Class C car allowance, and a smartphone allowance.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Legal matters?
No legal matters.
I do appreciate you claiming a request for review by committee.
We're going to have one of those, Mr. Chairman, we were actually working through that process right now, and the chairman of the Public Works Committee is going to meet with us in the next week or so, and we're going to bring that to the next commission.
Thank you, sir.
That's working on our portion of it right now.
Public comments? Public comments?
Let me know, I'll be there.
Public? Russell, you don't count anymore. I do know that we have an executive session, a couple of items we need to go through tonight, so if it, uh, meets with your approval, I would like to get a motion to go into executive session for a few minutes.
Make a motion to go into executive session.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. You are in executive session. Somebody prop up that chair, make sure he don't fall back down there.
I got a good team.
Use your big boy voice, then.
We're good. We discussed one property matter. Uh, there was, uh, nothing from that to take in, uh, open session, though.
Okay, well, I think we have two other property matters on the agenda. Richardson.
Make a motion to approve $55,000 to Flo Ming Chang and Su. Parcel 99, $524 to James and April Porterfield. Parcel 128, $10,500 to James Dan Belovich. Parcel 159 to obtain right-of-way annul easements for Furious Ferry widening project.
Second.
Say it again if you'd like.
I'd rather you-
I want to hear you say it again.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
I'll make a motion to approve $500 to Diane and Ronald Copeland Senior, parcel 88, right-of-way annul easements for Flowing Wells Road widening project.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Doctor, how many more do we have?
Flowing Wells is actually done, this was a, after the fact, where we realized we had an issue that was not addressed in the plan, so this was to, to solve that issue. So Flowing Wells property is, is pretty much wrapped up now.
Furious Ferry.
Furious Ferry, it says there's 10 left, but-
Oh, is there?
Chris is working on some difficult ones out there, he's trying to get them all closed, so.
Got some lawyers involved?
Yes.
Okay, I don't see anything else on the agenda, other than adjournment, so, uh, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand, we're adjourned.